Ricky, did you hear anything as to why we reimbursed out the $2,800?
We reimbursed them?
Yeah.
I'll call the common council meeting order. It is the second Tuesday of the month, 7 o'clock. The date and time is outside for the regular meeting of the Nacusa County Council. Could we take roll call, please?
Brian?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Come.
Here.
Here.
Yes.
Bretta?
Here.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Here.
I entertain a motion to approve the previous common council minutes.
Motion.
Motion second. Motion second to approve the previous common council minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
And I entertain a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Motion.
Motion second to approve the treasurer's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a citizen's forum. George, do you have something? Moving on then, we have the 2019 audit report from Hawkins-CPA's. Take it away.
Okay, I'm here.
All right, can everybody hear me?
You guys are here.
Okay.
We got half those people not here.
I'm in charge. Sean, maybe you can tell them to be quick. Does everybody have copies in front or do you want me to share my screen?
We got copies.
Yeah, they have.
Okay, but then I'm not going to share my screen. I'll just read through it. So, I'm Monica Helsner from Hawkins-CPA's, the partner in charge of your audit. First of all, thank you for letting me do this less ironically and not having to drive up to Nacusa, although it was a nice drive. So, we're going to start by, we'll just do a pretty brief overview of 2018 compared to 2019. If there's questions, you can certainly ask me. I think Sean's going to mute you, so you can ask me at the end if you want. But, so we'll start by going through the summary financial statements. That's a real thin book or the short report with the colored graphs in it. So, comment on page two. This is the independent auditors' report for this booklet, and it just, the second paragraph states that this does not contain all the required disclosures. So, we do this for council presentation only. It's just a little bit easier to read than all the thick book with all the numbers in it. So, we'll start by looking at the combined balance sheet for the city. So, you can see there that it's 2019 compared to 2018. We'll look at total assets and deferred outflows. So, our overall, our total assets and deferred outflows increased about $43,000 or 0.14%. So, overall, very comparable, not a lot of changes in there. Under the liabilities or deferred inflows section, total liabilities increased about $36,000 or 0.2%. So, again, that's very comparable. And the deferred inflows of resources increased about $23,000 or 1%. And a lot of this is just our tax rule and the Wisconsin retirement pension system based on an actuarial study. Then the equity, the net position represents water and sewer fund balances. Your general fund balance, you can see, went from $2,111,44 in 2018 down to $1,898,758 in 2019. So, we had a decrease of about $212,000 this year. Talk a little bit more on some of those details in a second, but every year I give you a percentage, what is your unassigned or available fund balance as a percentage of your total expenses for general funds? This year, that percentage is 34%. Last year was 37%. So, it's still very, very good. I tell people, anywhere from 25 to 35, there's no magical number, as long as you're not having to short-term borrow, and if you're able to do some projects without having to go out and borrow every time you need to do something. So, you know, what I can see what we're doing is we're increasing the balances over a few years, then we'll do a project and spend some of that down, and then we'll build it back up, spend it down. Okay, then the other fund balances, those represent our other governmental funds. There's more detail on a few pages back here, so we'll talk about that in a second. The graph shows your general fund balance. The blue line represents your overall total fund balance. The red represents your unassigned fund balance. So, total for 2019 was $1,898 for total, and your unassigned was $1,229. So, you can see that unassigned fund balance has remained pretty consistent over the years. We just had a slight dip in the blue bar this year. Okay, next page is, so I'm on page four, general fund revenue. So, we compare 2019 budget to actual, and then to 2018 actual. Overall, our revenue was over budget about $209,000. So, when we talk, but revenue being over budget is okay. And then if we compare that to the prior year, we increased about $64,000 or 1.9%. So, overall, still very comparable. Some of the biggest changes in the insurance recovery, we had a bit more of that this year. We had some, a little bit of insurance proceeds on the old, I think it was on the old fire building. And then our dividend for the insurance was bigger this year. And then sales of general fixed assets, that represents a trade-in value we got on, I think it was on a backhoe and vehicle maybe. So, that's where that $39,000 is coming from. The graph shows you where the revenue sources for the city of Nacusa are coming from. This is just our general fund, so I won't read those to you. Next page is our expenses. So, you can see, do the same format, comparing budget to actual to the prior year. Total expenditures were over budget, $354,000. So, typically, we're amending budgets, making sure we're pretty close. This year, we were over. I think we ended up doing a lot more capital outlay than normal this year. Definitely more than we budgeted for. We compare that number to 2018. We increased about $293,000 or between 8 and 9%. So, I'll just remind you our big capital outlay items, and remember, this is in the general fund. So, we got a backhoe, truck, a canine vehicle, a police interceptor vehicle. We did some cranmore road improvements, police radios, and I think it's Violet Avenue work. So, those are the big projects we did for capital outlay. You can see, the graph on the next page is our expenditures. You can see where the expenditures are going for the city. I won't read that to you. Next, we're going to talk water sewer on page six. So, overall, water revenue increased about $13,000 or 1.3%. So, pretty, over, pretty comparable overall. On the sewer side of things, we increased about $76,000 or 12.9%. So, I'll remind you, we did a rainy treat in 2019. So, that's reflective of why the revenue was so much higher. Then you can see the operating income in about the middle of the page, water, $394,000 for 2019. Sewer had a loss of $37,605, but much better than the prior year. The prior year was a loss of $109,000. So, raising those rates was a good thing. It helped improve the financial situation for sewer there. You can see the overall change in net position, positive $107 for water, and a loss of $131,000 for sewer. So, just need to keep an eye on those rates, making sure that we're generating enough revenue to cover, to cover those expenses that we have. The graph on the next page shows our water and sewer net income. You can see that the loss decreased for 2019, so that was good on, for the red bar, which is sewer. Next, on page seven, these are those other funds I talked about. So, just, it schedules out, we have special revenue funds and debt service fund. You can see all the TIPS are listed there. The two that I wanted to point out, tip four, has a negative fund balance of $19,571. And our capital projects has a negative fund balance of $29,139. So, something, obviously, the tip fluctuates a lot, and when we close those out, we deal with negative fund balances if they exist at that time. But for capital projects, we need to look at that and whether or not we need to get some more revenue in that fund, whether the general fund has to cover those past expenses, or where that money is going to come from. Then our overall financial information. We issued a clean, unmodified opinion, so that's the best opinion you can get. We did this audit remotely this year because it hit right in the heart of the, start of the COVID stuff. So, Joe and John, the folks at CLA, were very good about getting us everything. So, Bobby, me and Joe did a great job scanning us the requests that we had. I know it was probably a pain in their butt, but we got it done. So, you can see the capital asset activity there, and then long-term debt. And we're still well below our debt limit, so no issues there. Then the only other comment I wanted to make was in the audit report, it's called the independent auditors' report on communications with those charged with governance. If we had any issues during the audit, it would be noted in there. We did not have any issues, so I'm happy to report that. And it's a very clean audit. We had one journal entry in here for less than $10,000. So, very clean. So, appreciate all the work that everybody does to make sure that you're ready for us when we're ready to start the audit. So, I'll open it up for questions unless somebody wants me to go into more detail on something.
For the sewer end, can she?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. For the sewer end of it, there was $131,000 deficit, yeah, give or take?
Can you hear that?
I couldn't hear him very good.
He's asking about the sewer deficit of $131,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, is that looking, is that projected by you guys to disappear with the rates the way they are? Or can we maintain, or do we definitely have to just do a rate increase to make that number go away?
Well, a lot of it depends on usage. And I believe, I think you have a 20, you had an increase going to effect in 2020, didn't you?
Yes, it was our last raise, Monica, last 10% raise in 2020, yes. That's in effect right now.
We've actually done a couple of things. We have the raise, plus we've eliminated during the summer months, we used to have a sewer.
Moratorium, basically.
Sewer forgiveness for people that would use water for, you know, watering their gardens and stuff like that. We, we used to try and cut back on the sewer because it wasn't going to the sewer. But by doing that, if you did it for one, you had to do it for everybody. So, we were kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. So, we eliminated that, and the people who use the water like that are just going to have to pay that extra now. And I don't think that's going to lump to a whole lot when it's all said and done. But it's still better than everybody in the town getting the cut done. I mean, let's face it, we got to get rid of the deficit of $131,000 in one way or another and get back to running even. But that's why I'm wondering if we're channeling the right way now, are we going to have to look at a major increase to get rid of that, or can we just keep, you know, chipping away at it the way we are?
Yeah, I mean, you still have, you know, you have a $2 million fund balance in there. Now, that's not super high by any means, but I think if you just keep chipping away at it, obviously, if you're going to be at a loss of $200,000 or $100,000 every year for 10 years, that's going to, your fund balance is going to be gone really fast.
Right.
But if you can keep, you know, if you can cut the deficit in half every year or, you know, knock $75,000 off of it, that'll help a lot.
Okay. I just kind of looking for some guidance because I figure that sooner or later, there's going to have to be a rate change, and we're just talking percentages. Now, I'm trying to figure out what it's going to have to be.
Right. It's just important to keep in mind, you know, what you did was you structured it so that every year you had these increases, and that's good versus doing nothing, and then all of a sudden, you have to do a 50% increase.
Right.
So, it's better to just keep doing slight increases so that the public, you know, is used to it, and they understand that, hey, costs are going up every year. So.
Yeah.
Monica.
The only other thing you can do is kind of look at some of your expenses and make sure that when we do the allocation, that, you know, sewers get charged fairly for everything. Now, I don't know of anything from my perspective when I come in to do the audit that is unfair, but, you know, you can certainly look at that and make sure wages are, you know, if people aren't working 60% in sewer and 40 in water, that that's how it's getting allocated, not 75-25, because that's how it's always been done.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Monica, this is Joe. Do you think we, you know, we would have this five-year plan, 10% on the sewer, and then this is the last year of it? Do you think that's something that maybe we should re-up for another five years of that, or for three years of it, or do you have any suggestions on that, or?
Um, I guess I can't tell you. I think you should do something. Um, you know, I don't know, because obviously, to have a rate study done costs you money, too.
We've improved a lot, looking at your bar graphs. On the sewer end of it, it's still deficit, but that is something that I think as a council is going to have to make a commitment sometime for next year. But do it this year for next year is some type of percentage increase.
Joe, just jumping in here, Monica, this is Rick. When we hired MSA as part of this Wood Avenue project, part of their scope of services is to evaluate our cost for sewer and water. And Joe, you were a big part of that, giving them a lot of information. I haven't seen that data come back, but one of the things I'd like them to do is present to this council on that analysis of our rates in relationship to that project, and maybe Monica and/or John from CLA can be part of that discussion to look at these overall rates long-term, because I agree, we might need to make some adjustments going into this next budget cycle this fall.
Yeah, because otherwise, like what Monica says, it's better than doing nothing. And it was a five-year, five-year plan, and based on, you know, based on these bar graphs, it's improving quite a bit, but we just got to keep it, get it at least to balance out even anyway, right?
Keep the DNR off our backs.
We made some good strides the last five years.
Yeah.
Keep going up the DNR scale for back, otherwise they'll come in and they'll do it. We don't want that, because then they'll really be honest.
Yeah, just over, I'm just looking at the bar graph that she presented here in over three years, 17, 18, 19, I mean, I consider it to be pretty good, Joe.
Yeah.
Over a third, not quite a half, well over a third.
Yep.
So, I think, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Great.
We can keep it going.
Can't hear us, Monica, or not really?
Not really. I can hear somebody talking. I can hear exactly.
You missed.
So, you asked me a question, sorry.
You missed the big rainstorm. Is that, it's good you're home, so. There was just.
We got one here to go.
That was just some follow-up discussion about the strides that the city's made and improvements over that three-year timeframe on the sewer, chipping away.
Well, and it's good that we're talking about it, because obviously, you know, you can't just decide we're going to implement a new rate and put it into effect, you know, August 1st, and take time. So, you know, it's good that we're talking about it now, and, you know, we have some time to make some decisions and decide what we want to do for 2021.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Hey, buddy? Thank you, Monica.
Thanks, Monica.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for letting me do this. Take care, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Well, after the audit report, we'll move on to committee reports. And the first committee report is planning commission. Oliver Hamilton?
Planning commission had one meeting this month. There's a correction on the second line for members present, and then there's others. And our members present was, should be Gerald Cordis, who are DES, not Gerald Carlson. And with that, I move to adopt the minutes.
Motion second to adopt the meeting minutes of the planning commission. All in favor?
Aye.
The honorable mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, planning commission meeting was held on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020, 6:30 PM, Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Dan Carlson, mayor, Brad Hamilton, Terry Schumaski, Rich Schmidt from the DPW, Dan Downing, Gerald Cordis, and Brian Krubsack. Also in attendance were Garrett Coon, Mayor, excuse me, Municipal Judge Ashley Reimer, and City Attorney Nick Asst. Item one, City Attorney Nick Asst went through the proposed changes to the ordinance on the conditional use permits. Item two, recommend scheduling a public hearing on proposed changes to Municipal Code, Chapter 17. Any questions? Move to adopt item two.
Second. Motion second to adopt item two of the planning commission meeting minutes. Roll call vote, please. Brian?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Bering?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Bretta?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Next committee report is Ways and Means. Chairman Bering?
The Ways and Means Committee has one meeting to report on and has to be accepted as written.
Second. Motion second to accept the minutes of the Ways and Means Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
To the honorable mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, the Ways and Means Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, June 14th, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers at City Hall. Members present were Adam Bering, Brian Krubsack, Dan Downing, Garrett Coon. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Larry Krubsack, Mike Come, Rich Schmidt, Department of Public Works, Police Chief Shawn Woods, and Ambulance Chief Joe Kirchmann. Item one, we honored the bill lists. There were no license applications over their immigration seminars, conferences, and meetings. So, I'd like to make the motion to adopt item one.
Second. Motion second to adopt item one of the Ways and Means Committee report. Roll call vote, please.
Come?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Bering?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bretta?
Yes.
Next committee report, Public Works. Chairman Krubsack, y'all.
Public Works has one meeting to report on. I move that minutes accepted as written.
Second. Motion second to accept the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
To the honorable mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, Public Works Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, July 7th, 2020, at 5:00 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Larry Krubsack, Curtis Bretta, Brad Hamilton, and Adam Bering. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Dan Downing, Garrett Coon, Todd Faulkner, Ambulance Chief Joe Kretschmeyer, and Kerry Edmondson, and Rich Schmidt from the DPW. Item one, recommend the safe routes to school, Resolution R-0714-20 be signed by the mayor. Item two, discuss Nacusa School District restroom concession building sewer connection. Item three, recommend any city hall safety building doors painted at a cost of approximately $3,500. Item four, discuss city hall safety building entrance and parking lot plans. Item five, recommend having wastewater treatment facility final clarifier dome painted at a cost of approximately $19,500. Item six, discuss Freeman boat launch fishing piers. Item seven, discuss buildup, building up Riverside Park to help with runoff. Item eight, training equipment seminars were done. There's no questions. I move to adopt item one, three, five. One, three, and five.
Second. Motion second to adopt items one, three, and five of the Public Works Committee meeting minutes. Roll call vote, please.
Bering?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Bretta?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Something's never changed during all of years.
Next committee report is public safety. Chairman Bretta?
Public Safety is one meeting to report. I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second. Motion second to accept the minutes of the Public Safety Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
To the honorable mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, Public Safety Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, June 2nd, Council Chambers, City Hall. Members present were Curtis Bretta, Mike Come, Brad Hamilton, Larry Krubsack. Also in attendance, Mayor Dan Carlson, Brian Krubsack, Adam Bering, Garrett Coon, City Attorney Nicholas Asst, Ambulance Chief Joe Kretschmeyer, Fire Chief Ken Archie, Assistant Ambulance Chief Ken Moody, Assistant Fire Chief Nate Rangshmidt, and Katie Sit. Item one, seminars, conferences, training, we had nothing. Two, discuss bull hunting in the city limits. Three, discuss ambulance service calls. Four, the committee went into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c). Motion made by Curtis Bretta, seconded by Larry Krubsack. All committee members voted yes to enter closed session. And item five, the committee went into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.852. Motion by Curtis Bretta, seconded by Brad Hamilton. All committee members voted yes to enter into open session. No actions needed.
Next committee report, Property Recreation and Human Affairs. Chairman Krubsack?
Property Recreation and Human Affairs had one meeting to present. I make a motion to accept the minutes as.
Ready? Motion second to accept the minutes of the Property Recreation and Human Affairs Committee report. All in favor?
Aye.
To the honorable mention, to the honorable mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, Property Recreation and Human Affairs Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, July 7th, 2020, at 6:15 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Brian Krubsack, Dan Downing, Garrett Coon, and Mike Come. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Larry Krubsack, Adam Bering, Curtis Bretta, City Attorney Nicholas Asst, Ambulance Chief Joe Kretschmeyer, Rich Schmidt of the DPW, Matt and Tonya Beaver, Casey Schroeder, and Todd and Kim Hee. Number one, recommend proceeding with Wisco Treaty and Developer Agreement. Number two, recommend proceeding with community block grant from Nutrativa Global. Three, discuss vacating Gabriel Lane. Four, recommend certified survey map for the lot on Wood Avenue. Three, discuss selling lot on First Street, or sorry, five, discuss selling lot on First Street. Six, recommend $3,200 for the Nacusa School District YMCA summer recreation program. Any questions? Make a motion to, go with one, two, and four, and six.
Second. Motion second to adopt items one, two, four, and six of the Property Recreation and Human Affairs Committee minutes. Roll call vote, please.
Bretta?
Yes.
Kuhn?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Bering?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Next committee report is, excuse me, Wages and Salary.
Chairman Hamilton, sorry. Wages and Salary had one meeting this month that I'd like to move to adopt the minutes presented.
Second. Motion second to adopt the minutes of the Wages and Salary Committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
To the honorable mayor and members of the Nacusa County Council, Wages and Salary meeting was held Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020, at 5:00 PM in the Nacusa Council Chambers. Members present were Brad Hamilton, Larry Krubsack, Dan Downing, and Brian Krubsack. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Rich Schmidt from the DPW, Police Chief Shawn Woods, Fire Chief Mike Archie. Woods, Fire Chief Mike Archie, Dustin Moody, and Municipal Judge Ash- Ashley Webb. Item one, recommend raising Municipal Judge's salary to five hundred dollars per month effective July one, twenty-twenty. Item two, recommend adopting North Shore Bank Health reimbursement account for retirees. Item three, recommend adopting facilities security document and adding to handle. And item four, recommend adopting twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-two Nacusa Fire Department wage. No questions, I move to adopt items one, two, three, and four.
Second. If we're adopting all of them, and I have a no on one? Twenty-one, number four?
So I'll move to adopt items one, two, and three.
Second. Motion second to adopt items one, two, and three of the Wage and Salary Committee report, roll call vote, please. Hamilton?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bretta?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Bearing?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Coon?
I move to adopt item four.
Second. Motion second to adopt item four of the Wage and Salary Committee report, roll call vote, please. Hamilton?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Bearing?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bretta?
Yes.
Downing?
No.
Moving on then, old business, is there any old business items to come before the council? Hearing none, move on to new business. Uh, first item is twenty-twenty ambulance service rates. Chief Kirchmer?
Yes, so I, I sent these out, hopefully you got them, while you have them from the last meeting, hopefully in writing, or I handed them out, plus they should be electronic for you. Um, we did a survey with LifeQuest, who's our billing company. The last time our rates were increased were in twenty-sixteen. Um, so they looked at our rates, they looked at six different ambulance services besides ours, four of them at the EMT paramedic critical care level, same as ours, one at IV tech level, one at EMT basic level. Did a comparison of the rates for them, came up with what their recommendations were for the rate increases which are on those sheets in front of you. Um, do you have any specific questions on any of the, the rate increase amounts? Pretty much, if you look at the, the last page, which is the, the summary of all six departments and ours, the rate increase they're suggesting for each of those levels puts us pretty much at about the, the second highest out of the seven different departments. But it brings us in line to what other departments in our area that aren't on this list as well are charging for their patient amounts. So I'm looking for your recommendations to sign their sheet, recommending that we wanna adopt those rates, and looking for what date you might wanna have the rates increased.
What date you...
I was gonna say the customer did, do that at, I don't know, a half year, just whenever he needed it?
Uh, the last one was not done at the beginning of the year, so, I mean, I, in theory, I think it could be done August first, if you wanted August first.
I saw it as well.
Make a motion. Second. Motion second to adopt the new twenty-twenty ambulance service rates, we have roll call vote, please. Effective eight, eight-one?
Yeah, eight-one, yep.
Brian?
Yes.
Bearing?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Bretta?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance six oh five, prevent intoxicating liquor and fermented beverage.
Um, our county treasurer kind of wanted us to do this. I mean, we always enforce the personal property tax, so like, we would send out memos at for renewal for the liquor and beer licenses for the establishments, uh, through requested that, you know, the beer man's gotta be paid, personal property's gotta be paid, um, before issuing his license. Now, uh, we really didn't worry so much about the real estate taxes, because, uh, if, if the local, if the taxes aren't paid to our local treasurer, the county, uh, takes care of the collections. But they kind of said, well, you know, you, we really want you to, uh, kind of start enforcing this, uh, a, a little more with the real estate. Now, we've been fortunate through the years, uh, that we haven't had an issue. But, uh, uh, it's just basically all it is, is, uh, adding the word "real estate taxes" in that sentence, so it spells it right out clearly, that, so that next year, uh, uh, you know, when I send out the memo that, you know, I'm gonna be telling them that, that's gotta be paid off. I, I think there's one business that has taxes that are still hold yet to the treasurer's office up in Ram, at the courthouse, but, uh, usually they pay those off like August, kind of like, you know, like maybe that's his cash flow or whatever, but, uh, um, this would push it back so that, that's gotta be paid prior to July one, when we start the new licensing period, so...
I make a motion to adopt ordinance, the change in ordinance of six oh five.
Motion second to adopt changes to ordinance six oh five, we have a roll call, please. Brian?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Bretta?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Bearing?
Yes.
Uh, next item on the agenda, the various monthly reports, I entertain a motion to approve, so... Second. Motion second to approve the various monthly reports, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the plans, Mr. R.
Um, we had the three bill lists, and then we had a bunch of pay vouchers, the Board of Appeals, seven fifteen, wage of salary two fifty, property rent three oh five, excuse me, two fifty. Public Safety, two fifty. Public Works, two fifty. Planning Commission, three fifty-five. Airport, one hundred and ten. Council, five twenty. Ways and Means, two fifty. Cameron, thirty, and Mayor, eight hundred.
Move to approve the bills as presented?
Second. Motion second to approve the bills, we have a roll call vote, please. Bretta?
Yes.
Bearing?
Yes.
Coon?
Coon?
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Uh, next item on the agenda, are there any other issues, says provided by law? Can you come forward?
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Making adjourn.